Evening. It is now 7:00 PM on Monday, August 29th, 2022. I hereby call this meeting of the Board of Education of the Nordonia Hills City School District to order. This is a typical meeting of the Nordonia Hills City School Board of Education. It is a meeting in public, but not a public meeting. There will be an opportunity for public participation in the open forum section of the meeting a little bit later. All speakers should have already signed in and will be called to the podium at the appropriate time. If you are uncomfortable speaking during an open forum, comments and questions may always be submitted to the Board and Administration through emails or phone calls. Mr. Brown, would you please call the board?
Mr. Kearney, here.
Mr. Lormer, here.
Mr. McKinley, here.
Mr. Timmore, here.
Ms. Fodich, here. All board members present.
Can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll option.
I'll side with you. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney, yes. Mr. Lormer, yes. Mr. McKinley, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fodich, yes. Motion, please. All right, communications, we have two items this month. I want to start with Karen Byers because she represents the Building Boosters of Nordonia Hills. And I know our new teachers are here. And I wanted to make sure that our new teachers got to see Karen before we had our little refreshment breaks. Karen, thanks for being here.
Thanks. I've got a handout for you. No, I want... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. I'm Karen Byers. I am the president of Building Boosters of Nordonia Hills. We gave an outline to the board and two ladies here from the press. This tells a little bit about what Building Boosters has done for the last five years, five or six years. We're a 501(c)(3) charity started in 2016 to support the Nordonia Hills City School District and students that live in the district. Since its inception, Building Boosters has raised over $15,400 in corporate and individual donations. We have also netted another $9,600 from concession stand sales at Sagamore Park during the NHAA baseball season. With these funds, we have provided $8,250 in scholarships to graduating seniors. So if you have a graduating senior who'd like to fill out our application this year, it's a $750 scholarship. We have purchased over $4,000 in appliances and equipment for the high school. We have purchased over $3,000 in equipment and funded murals at the middle school. So if you're a new teacher in these schools, we have ways for you to apply for grants for some of the things that you may not be able to fit in the budget that the school gives you. We have purchased over $1,500 in furniture and appliances for Lee Eaton and over $1,100 in different various items for the three elementary schools. We also donated to the community $1,700 back to the NHAA football team when they are going to their tournaments each year. And we donated over $800 to other 501(c)(3) organizations in the areas such as Rocking for Rocks and the Emergency Assistance Center. We believe that every little bit helps and over the last six years, as you can see, it's added up. And we've given you a list of all the different things and what we've given to each of the different buildings. Next month, I'm going to tell you about our work with the 2022 Fill the Bus Campaign. But today, I'm here to promote the 2022-2023 Nordonia Hills Teacher Wish List. It's a Facebook group. Right now, we have 999 members of this Facebook group. In 2021, the wish list was started by Joelyn McFerran as a way for teachers and staff to tell the community what they needed in their classrooms. The needs were immense due to COVID. It gave the community a way to assist and help out wherever they could to provide the staff and teachers with the tools they needed. Over $60,000 worth of donations were made that year to the Nordonia Schools and St. Barnabas School System. The teachers and the staff would post a list and the members would claim the items and then send it to them, either drop it off. There are a lot of Amazon wish lists. They just automatically send it right from Amazon. Some of the bigger items, groups went together to put money and buy them for them. Building Boosters assists in managing this list and we have the list up there now. As I said, we have over 999 members in this Facebook group. There are over 50 posts from teachers of all six buildings in the Nordonia School System and from St. Barnabas. This list is up all year. It doesn't have to be only at the beginning of the year. So if something you need in the middle of the year comes up and you can't find it in a budget, you can post it here. And especially the parents in your classrooms are very excited to find something to donate because they want to be a part of what helps their children learn. Teachers are requesting items as small as pencils and markers to larger items such as air purifiers. Community members can also make donations through Building Boosters if they wanted to. Last year, as I said, we collected money for some of the bigger items that people wanted and they said, "Why don't we give $100 towards that?" And then we came up with what was needed for some of the bigger items. If you do make any donations, you can make them directly to the teacher. You can have it sent to the school. You can drop it off yourself. Or you can make it through Building Boosters. Try to make it as easy as possible and either help out any way you want to. Any items or monetary donations made for Building Boosters will be donated 100% to the teacher or the wish list they choose and it's considered a restricted donation. This group, this Facebook group, gives the community and the staff from the schools one more place to come together to show our support for the students and the administration. Please check it out and join the page if you can. Anybody that's already an existing member can approve another member to be in the group. So it's not like you have to go through any kind of vetting process. We're just trying to get people connected with what it is that's needed and where it's needed. Also, please let me know if you would like any other information about Building Boosters. Thank you.
Karen, thank you so much. Your leadership in the community is so much appreciated and respected. You, I remember you came to me five years ago and said, "I want to do something positive for our community and our schools." And you did this and what you've done for our staff and our kids is amazing. Thank you so much on behalf of the district. And this time, I'm going to make my way over to the podium to introduce our new teachers. So I'm really excited to do this every year where we invite our new teachers to meet the board. We haven't done it in a couple of years because of COVID. So I'm glad that we can bring this back. The teachers you're about to meet have gone through a rigorous screening process. When we met with them in new teacher orientation, we talked about, you know, why are you here? What is it about you that stood out that made us want to hire you? Because we had hundreds of people apply for positions. We had dozens go through interviews. We screened, we do reference checks, and these folks rose to the top. What is about them is that they care about kids. They're absolutely strong with their content. But more than that, they have those skills that allow them to build those good relationships. So I'm going to introduce the teachers. Teachers, when I introduce you, if you come up, stand in front of the table and stay there until we're all done. And then when we're done with that, you'll shake hands with the board. The board will then vote to have a recess. And during the recess, we have some cookies and some water available. Everybody can mingle. Community members, you're welcome to join us in that. We'll take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll continue on with the board. So let's start with Christina Brown. Christina is going to be teaching at Nordonia Middle School all year as a long-term sub in eighth grade social studies. Christina went to the University of Akron. She was born and raised in Michigan and she moved to Ohio when she was 16. She did her student teaching here in Nordonia with Mr. Dietrich for 16 weeks from January to May. And she finished the school year as a long-term sub working with Mrs. Justice. Christina Brown. Holly Booker is a gifted interventionist at Northfield and Rushwood. Holly went to Akron University for her bachelor's degree, Cleveland State for her master's degree. You're going to see a common thread here that we steal teachers from other districts. We are a destination district. People want to come to Nordonia. Holly was in Camden City for four years until we took her. She has two cats, Bug and Wing. Kyle Finn is going to be our new family and consumer science teacher at Nordonia High School. The board might remember that through our work with Portrait of a Graduate, we decided to increase the offerings for our kids in these life skills. And we added a teacher for the first time in many times, and that's Kyle. She went to Ohio University for both her bachelor's and her master's degree. We stole her from Ravenna where she had taught for seven years. She's traveled to over 20 countries and she enjoys incorporating those experiences in the classroom. And one reason she wanted to come to Nordonia, she's a 2010 Nordonia graduate. Lauren Greco. Lauren is our new kindergarten teacher at Ledgeview. She went to Youngstown State for her bachelor's degree and Concordia University for her master's. She was teaching in the Youngstown City Schools for seven years before we were able to talk her into coming here. And she was a gymnast. When she got older, she was a gymnastics coach. She loves teaching and is very happy to be here in Nordonia. Lauren Briggy. Lauren is our new fifth grade math and science teacher at Lee Eaton. She got her bachelor's degree from Malone University and she's been doing a lot of long-term sub jobs in various districts for the past year. She played golf in college and enjoys teaching golf in the summer and playing golf on her off time. And she works out. Lauren Briggy. Andrea Maldonado is our new mathematics teacher at Nordonia High School. Andrea went to Kent State University for her bachelor's degree, Dominican University for her master's. We stole Andrea from Chicago. Yes, the Chicago Pallet Stairs where she taught three years. Andrea is bilingual. She speaks English and Spanish fluently. And this is our first year teaching high school, but she's excited to get the chance to start something new at Nordonia. Andrea Maldonado. Danielle Miller is teaching here at Northfield Elementary School. She is a Kent State University graduate. She did some long-term sub work here at Nordonia and also did her student teaching here at Nordonia. She also long-term subbed at Talmage and Twinsburg and North Broyles. She loves learning and creating and has fun using materials from the earth to make much of her artwork. She's been working as the education director for a nonprofit organization. She's overjoyed to be working in the district where she began her teaching career. Danielle Miller. Donovan Nichols. Donovan is a new teacher at Lee Eaton, an intervention specialist. Donovan got his bachelor's degree from the University of Akron. He'll be coaching freshman football and is also a Nordonia graduate, class of 2016. Donovan Nichols. Next is Patrick Riley. Not that Patrick Riley, it's just the other Patrick Riley. Nordonia High School Science teacher. Patrick went to Ohio State, the Ohio State University, and also worked in Springfield for two years and Euclid for two years. Patrick's favorite drink is chocolate milk. Maggie Schneider is going to be doing a long-term sub job at Rushwood. Maggie graduated from Ohio Northern University and worked for these central local schools for five years. She loves to travel and is excited to be back here where she grew up. Nordonia feels like... Tyler Stern. Tyler is going to be teaching English Language Arts at the middle school. He went to the Ohio State University and he taught at St. Barnabas for five years. His family could staff a school. His mom, brother, and sister are all teachers. He has a dog, Ellie, and a cat, Finn, and he is engaged to be married next summer. Rebecca Taylor is our new speech and language pathologist at Nordonia High School. Rebecca went to Case Western Reserve University for her bachelor's degree and Edinburgh University for her master's. She worked for the Charles County Public Schools for two years and the East Cleveland City Schools for three years. She enjoys volunteering at the local dog rescue, canine lifeline, and she is also excited to join the Nets. Danielle Westgrew. Danielle is going to be our new psychologist at Lee Eaton. Danielle went to Cleveland State University for her bachelor's degree and her master's degree. We stole Danielle from the Brexville-Broview Heights City School District where she had taught, or psychologist, psychologist-ed for six years. She used to be a certified yoga instructor. She has three sons, ages 20, 16, and 11, and her favorite thing to do is to go to her kids' sporting events. And finally, Joe Zephyr. Joe Zephyr is going to be a new intervention specialist at Nordonia High School. He went to Myers University for his bachelor's degree, Cleveland State for his master's. He worked in Euclid for six years and Painesville for a year. He has been a football coach for the last 12 years and he's also been a head baseball coach. Now, Joe's not on our staff yet, but we hope that he'll be on our football staff soon. He is married to his wife, Courtney. They have two daughters. Kinsley is four years old. Scarlett is seven years old and Kayla. Well, that's three, Joe.
Yeah. That was a while way back in the day.
All right.
I have a 17-year-old daughter that goes to...
And a 17-year-old daughter named Kayla, so that's three daughters. Good job, Joe. Well, this explains it. Joe's a diehard Browns. Joe Zephyr. Again, big congratulations and a welcome to our new Nordonia teachers. You guys are going to be awesome. We're very proud of the work you've done already and you're going to have a great career here. If you would, go run the golf and shake everybody's hand and then the board will move for a recess. At the recess, please feel free to get up, have some cookies, some bottles of water for about 10 minutes.
Motion for a brief recess.
Motion. I'll side with you.
Mr. Kearney, yes. Mr. Lormer, yes. Mr. McKinley, yes. Mr. Timmore, yes. Ms. Fodich, yes. Let's take about 10 minutes, have some cookies, meet the new teachers.
Our new teachers are more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the board meeting, or you can go to Rosati's and see what they have on tap today.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for welcoming our new teachers, our new staff members, and we are really excited to have them join us. Um, just go ahead and jump right back into our meeting. We are up to open forum, give me just a moment because it is getting to sleep. Alright, here we go. So we are at open forum in our, in our agenda for the evening. Um, although the public has the right to attend board meetings, it has no inherent right to participate in the deliberations of the board without its consent. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as, as concern them, but in public session, the board has the right to request that complaints about school personnel or against any person connected with the school system be directed to the appropriate administrator. The time on the wall will provide five minutes for each speaker. Mr. Brown, who's our super speaker tonight, please?
First on the docket is Mr. William Beck.
Mr. Beck, would you please come join us?
Wow, okay, I was really looking to follow somebody else.
You get to start the show.
Well, that's stupid. Okay, uh, does this thing work?
It works.
Okay, can't tell from up here, now I know how people feel. Okay, well, I'm, I'm the one that sent an email to Matt and to Joe. And, uh, that was my concerns about, okay, where we were at with, uh, you know, just like me, like everybody else, I got, you know, this hundred sixty-five million dollar thing and it's like, oh my God, what am I going to do? Okay, so that's what started, you know, my search for, uh, uh, well, I, I think if you read my email, uh, we have six schools, I refer to them as cost centers, because that's what it's been called in the past, because I've done, I worked for two banks, okay, so half my career is in the bank, understand what's going on. So, anyway, uh, when, when you're doing a consolidation of cost centers, what I was looking for is what kind of savings am I going to see? Okay, because I should see economies of scale. And, and I didn't see that in what I was looking for. And that's why I asked the question about, for the cost centers, there's, every cost center has a one. Okay, so depending what the cost center is, you know, most of them have wages, some don't have equipment. So I, I looked, in our case, okay, well, we have buildings, okay, and I, I looked at the one where I'd say, okay, what is the cost that people are paying? Okay, so that takes care of everything, you know, planning people, the, the whole shaman. Okay, what's the wages? And then what's the transportation cost? Because we have transportation costs to, 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 to people to come. So what I was looking for is the one rate on the six schools right now, we're going to go down to three, okay, so there's got to be economies of scale or something. And that's frankly is the piece that's missing. Okay, and, uh, Matt sent me a copy of, uh, the, the building cost proposals to repair on and stuff. I haven't had a chance to go through it. So, um, and, unless I have anything else. Oh, I, I did mention, uh, the, uh, let's have a read this time. Anyway, uh, you know, the, uh, the students. And, and you can see the curve coming down, okay, now do we understand why we're losing students? And then that thing that was on, one of the things I had in my email is, are we planning to overfill? Because seeing that the, the student rate was dropping, are we losing them because of the community's bit old? Or are we losing them because of homeschool? So these were some of the questions I had. And there's one more. Maybe questions from Dean, I would be interested.
Well, Mr. Beck, thank you for, um, for asking. I, as I told you, I'm glad that you're taking the time to do some research before you, you go out and vote. Uh, Mr. Brown and I are working on getting detailed answers for you, but I want to answer them here in public while we, while we have the opportunity. Um, but they're not going to be exact, I want you to know that. Our architects tell us that we can expect about a seven hundred thousand dollars savings per building that we close. So we're anticipating just over two million dollars in saving. The majority of that would be in personnel costs. Now, I, I don't want our, um, our staff members to panic about that because that'll go through attrition. And part of that is because of our declining enrollment, enrollment in Ohio, in fact, I believe in nearly every state in the nation is, uh, declining, there are fewer school-aged kids. Um, ours is slightly declining, and then the projection shows that it's going to be, um, pretty stable. But the answer is right now, we have too much classroom space, uh, for what we have. The three buildings will bring us more in line with what we need.
Okay.
Can't tell you about utilities, because in some, in some, um, instances, our, uh, our equipment is going to be much more efficient than what we have.
Well, that's where I'm driving at.
But we'll also have, I mean, you, people can feel it here tonight, there's no air conditioning in many of our buildings. Our new buildings will all be air conditioned. So the fact is, it may be spending more per building in like electric, but we'll have fewer buildings.
Well, I would still expect to see, you know, again, you know, like this is like unusual anyway. And so I would still expect to see more efficiencies, especially when we get into heating and cooling. But that was the other thing I had, uh, which I didn't, it was in my, on my email. Uh, if I look at what we're proposing right now, it comes out for like fifty thousand dollars per student. And I think I noted that, I says, I still believe we can do better.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that number, you said fifty thousand per student. I guess I'm imagining you mean present student, but these buildings-
Why, I did-
Yeah, because these buildings will educate twenty thousand students over the next seventy-five years.
Yeah, well, you know, I just looked at, okay, our oldest weight is still at three hundred, and so I'm looking at, okay, fifty thousand per student, and I still think that's kind of high.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been in the profession a while, I've never heard, um, that metric used to post out a building, it's typically price per square foot, not per student, but, so I, I don't have a good answer for that.
Because you never worked for National City Bank.
No.
This is where I got beat up with this cause of, you know. So I mean, this is why we're in cost centers, I've heard, how have you got to propose to the board? Because, you know, I went and just walked in and said, well, I need a new cost system, you're, it's only gonna be five million dollars, I can tell you what they would have done to you. Okay, you know, the guy with the book, he grabbed me out. Uh, so, you know, and, but, but these are the things that, uh, we, we need to really understand, because of the community can look at and say, okay, so we're going to be spending this to do, to get this. Okay, I also put in there, I still think we need an option B or an option C. You know, instead of maybe, you know, throwing the jackhammer and destroying the whole thing, maybe we need to look at doing it in pieces. Okay, because, you know, putting something on, 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 you know, devoted in right now is really not a good idea because we are in this, and this is one of the important, a lot of people are going to be doing.
Uh, you know, the district, um, the steering committee put together several options. There was a community meeting, and this option was the option that the majority of the people in the community, um, agreed on. Renovating all of our buildings would cost about a hundred and thirty-five million dollars, and that does not change any programming. New buildings, about a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. Uh, and the thought among the steering committee, uh, was that it makes a lot more sense to build three brand-new buildings instead of spending almost as much to renovate a six-old building. We will get you, and I, probably over your time, but we will get your answers. And those are great questions. We are putting together frequently asked question documents, we'll make sure we get that out to the community. Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Laura Gable.
Okay, is that good? Can you hear me? All right, great. Hi, everyone, my name is Laura Gable, and I am a parent in the district. I have a 2021 graduate, um, who was prepared very well for college by Nerdonia Schools, as well as I have, uh, a freshman in the high school. I have, I want to talk to you guys a little bit about school safety today. I have a unique perspective on that. I have been a university professor in the area of school safety for the past fifteen years. Um, in fact, your new school psychologist was one of mine, yay! Um, and I also, uh, do national training for, um, school districts all throughout the state. Um, and one thing I want to really talk to you about is that Nerdonia really does follow and keep up with the latest in school safety. Um, for an example, Ohio just recently had a school safety summit that was down in Columbus. We had, um, our business manager attend and go to a lot of sessions, as well as two of our board members. Um, sessions included things like, um, behavioral threat assessment. Look, we had the FBI and Secret Service came and spoke with us. We had the principal of Columbine come and talk with us about lessons learned, as well as some, uh, some individuals from Sandy Book were there, talking about the latest things in school safety. Um, Dr. Clark put out a nice article in the News Leader on, I think it was June eighth. I actually took it into my graduate class and showed it to my students, because it talked about the things that we are doing in this district to keep our kids safe. Um, and you know, when I teach my students, we talk about two different areas. We talk about, um, physical safety and we talk about emotional safety. And in talking about the physical safety piece of it, that's, that's the soft skills, that's those positive behavior supports that we know are happening in the schools, that's the additional counselors that are available, that's those individuals that come and, and talk with students in the district, and Nerdonia has done a great job in those, um, emotional safety areas. The physical safety is the next piece of it, and there are two pieces that I want to talk about specifically. Um, we talk about, um, two areas, one is natural surveillance, and that's being able to look and when you're going through a building, um, see down the hallways to make sure that there aren't little alcoves in areas that kids can hide or bully other kids. Things, um, like making sure you can see out those windows. So if there's a perpetrator coming from outside, you know that there, um, that you're going to be able to see them. All of those physical type things are, happen in the school buildings. The next one is natural access. And in that part, it's how do we let people into our buildings? And how can we, um, make sure that only the people that we want in the buildings are in the buildings? And those are things like a double entry doorway, um, which we physically in a lot of our buildings don't have, because none of these things were even thought of fifty years ago or a hundred years ago. And yes, we have done some good things in Nerdonia to try and retrofit and make things happen. Um, but really to have new buildings would really give us the state of the art that our children would need to make them safe now and in the future. Um, yes, we've done things, we've got some good communication systems, um, some other things that have been happening in school safety, but when you look at the things that happened in Uvalde, when you look at some of the things that, that went wrong, it was some of that physical building plan, it was some of the communications that didn't get through. Um, and if we, if we work on some of these new buildings, um, we can ameliorate some of those things and make all of our kids safe from now until in the future. Um, and I just want to say as well, I've been in this district for, gosh, um, fourteen, fifteen years, and I thank all of you, because my kids have been safe, and it's because of all of you and all of the hard work that you do. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Laura. And just a side note, tomorrow Casey is hosting, uh, Tim Del Vecchio, he's with the Ohio, uh, Schools Council, and he'll be doing a safety audit of all six of our buildings tomorrow, facilities audit. Looking forward to getting his results. All right, next up is Carol Lewis.
I've been trying to read articles about what you would like to do with the levy money. I've been trying to, uh, find out whatever information I can, and there's a few things that are unanswered as far as, uh, satisfying me. So let's start with the premise that the levy would pass. And so now we have, in the next couple of years, not going to have buildings being used by our school system anymore. And that means that they could be sold, or the land could be sold. Uh, my question is, if you were to sell those buildings, where does that money go? Is it going into the general fund so it can be used for salaries and, uh, maintenance and so on? Or is there a specific place it's going to go?
I, I can answer that. Uh, under Ohio law, anything that we sell, it's a permanent improvement type of, a structure or anything like that. The proceeds from that first has to have to go to pay off any outstanding debt.
So it would go against the cost of the new buildings?
Well, no, uh, that, that it's, it would be tied to. So if that, that was still in place, uh, when we sold that asset, that proceeds from that herd of sale would have to go pay down, pay off the remaining balance.
Okay, and then the other question that comes into mind is that each one of the buildings, and I know I'm sounding a little bit like Mr. Beck, but each one of them that is taken out of line, you are going to have maintenance costs that don't exist anymore, utilities and so on. And so we are currently paying about seven million dollars a year on the most recent general levy. What happens to the money that we're saving? Does that also just add to that? Or is there a specific place that that could go?
So the operational savings will help prolong the fund balance of the general fund to continue operations of the district, to push that fund balance down the road. operations of the district, to push that fund balance down the road.
Okay. And then one of my other questions is, and thank you for answering so succinctly, the monies that we are going to save or to earn by selling, can those be redirected so that the actual cost of building the new buildings could be expanded? So for instance, you think it's going to work out at one sixty-five, but with the cost of materials and the cost of labor climbing daily, there's every chance in the world that it's not going to work on the budget that we are hoping it would. Can you redirect those funds toward the buildings?
You bring up great points there, and to an extent, yes. But keep in mind too, that when we, if it's successful and there's a bond issuance, we'll get proceeds from that debt, which will sit in investment vehicles for a number of years, which will accrue interest, which should cover any additional overages or additional programming that needs to be taken place. So there will be another component of this bond issue that we can't decide on to help, if there's potential overages due to cost.
And then last but not least, there has to be a project manager. Okay? Do you have the right to hire your project manager, or does that come through the contractor that will be doing the building?
So that'll be a process that the board will have to go through at that time. What they'll most likely look at is exploring the construction manager at risk option, and that will be a request for qualifications, proposals from various entities across the state, across the nation that do this, who are living. They will submit those proposals to the board and go through a thorough vetting process to hire them.
And then last but not least, have you chosen a contracting firm? Because there can't be many that are Ohio-based and familiar with school building. Okay? It's very much a specialized thing.
Yeah, you're right. It is specialized, for sure. Nothing's been done as of yet. We don't have any notice of whether or not this will be even moved forward. So nothing's been done to date.
Okay. And the last part of it is just a comment. I've been watching Northfield Center with building their new safety services building, and the cost overruns are outrageous. And understandable, there is nothing that's questionable. It's just what happens when you are building. And so with our one sixty-five, if the levy should pass, what have you got built into that figure for the unforeseen? I mean, we ran into this with the sports complex.
Two things. One, there's always a contingency factor that's built into any large-scale construction project. But then also, like I mentioned earlier, the interest that we'll earn on those debt proceeds will, could, the way the interest rates are currently, could help cover anything that we can foresee, foreseeable, in the foreseeable future.
So do you have better than a two or two-and-a-quarter percent that a consumer would get at this time in interest?
We're not allowed to go out and do unexpected investments, so everything that we do is safe and secure, and it's what the market provides.
Okay. So at two and possibly maybe it'll go up to three, we're not exactly going to get rich on interest.
Early projections at a hundred and sixty billion would probably be around twelve million dollars in interest.
Be impressive. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Carol. Good seeing you. You're old, we caught you way back. Just one correction about the stadium. This, this tends to come up, and it's, it's not true that there was overrun of the stadium. The stadium, the bond was reduced, and again, I wasn't here at the time, but I've heard the stories and read the stories. The bond was reduced with the promise that the board would, at that time, would look for private funding, and that fell through. It was not a case of overruns or mismanagement. It was that they, they reduced the military levy with the promise of finding private funds.
All right. Next up is John Patterson.
Hello, John Patterson. Nordonia graduate, resident fifty-nine years, went to school in here. Okay, so you guys know all that. All right, I have a question right off the bat about your saying about the interest off the money. You didn't collect the money. How do you gain interest off the money that you haven't collected? The, you're saying about the hundred and sixty-five million, because I'd love to know how to do that.
The, the bond proceeds, when, when we issue that debt, we get a hundred and sixty-five million dollars that we put in a bank account.
Really? Interesting. Okay, good. Nice. Thank you very much. Okay. So I'd like to go back to like some of the repairs, repairs at the high school, the roof. We had a roof put on there seven years ago, and we're already doing repairs. How long do roofs supposed to last? Any of you guys know?
We have not done a complete roof restoration at the high school in more than twenty years. They patched different parts at a time.
They're patching it over that?
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Next one, I, I noticed that we've only put in three million dollars worth of repairs to our school since two thousand and nineteen. Have, have we given you seven million a year to do these repairs? So aren't there a lot of repairs that aren't done that should be taken care of?
No, that's not accurate. It was, the, the levy raised seven million dollars a year. But a reminder, that's an operating levy. It's not a bond issue. So we, we don't have permanent improvement levies here in Nordonia. We only have operating levies. And so that levy pays for literally everything. Is it salaries? Yes. It's benefits, it's utilities, but it's also roofs and boilers and those kinds of things. In fact, the reason we went out to get the architect was to find out, you know, give us, I'm sorry, the OFCC study was to give us an idea of what systems we should prioritize because we knew that our boilers and our roofs were coming up on about twenty years old, and we wanted to find out where we're going to spend money.
All right, next. Okay. Academic success on new buildings. You have Maple Heights, Ravenna, all these new places. So what percentage of the academic skills have grown up since you got to these schools? What will that do for this school? Because you guys have said at other meetings, it's all about the kids and they, the learning and this and that. So is there any studies that show that we will make a difference if these kids are in new schools versus these nice schools, which our kids are doing outstanding? I'm so proud of what you guys have done for my son. As I've been going to colleges, realizing you guys have done a great job, the teachers, God bless these, they, they prepared my son. So what will a new building do for him or other kids?
I don't have any studies in front of me that I've even read, not that I've looked that would say that, that correlates academic achievement with new facilities. I do know what it means for the instruction and teaching process as far as having facilities that allow a more modern type of education, the small group instruction, large group instruction, flexible spacing, those kinds of things. I would have to get back with you on, are there, are there studies that show that new buildings increase academic achievement?
All right. So now I happened to see, before I came here, your report that came out that saying how bad all our schools are, how they're poor, and also look back at two thousand and nineteen, where they were graded at a lot, a higher level. What happened in these two years that these buildings are falling apart? And how did these levels go from, oh, they're fairly good, to now we have to replace everything?
I don't believe there's a difference between the two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-one reports that that, that's significant.
It certainly looked, it read that there was, first it was okay to pass if you guys needed whatever the bill of the bond was in two thousand and nineteen, and now all of a sudden they need so much more. You know, something had happened in between these years.
And there was not a bond issue in two thousand and nineteen.
What was, what was in two thousand and nineteen?
There was an operating levy. That's different than a bond issue. Bonds are used to build facilities. Operating levies are used to operate facilities.
Which falls into repairing.
It does here because we don't have a permanent improvement levy.
Okay. And let's see. What else? Oh. Anxiety, I've seen that article in the Sagamon Magazine. You had talked about that, where the kids have anxiety about the ratings. Anxiety is seeing what these taxes are going to go up. So these kids should have anxiety at a young age, so when they get to our age, they can relate to this and not be such a shocker when they think it's going to go up so high every, you know, month and up. Anyway, so I think that's pretty much it. And I thank you guys all very much for your time, and the teachers as well. My son is so well-prepared from you guys. I love it.
Thanks, Mr. Becker. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
All right, next up is Lauren Bruns.
Hey. My name's Lauren Bruns. I wanted to talk about school safety, and I was glad to hear the other speaker talk about all the programs that are going on. I think that's absolutely wonderful. But the Ohio Legislature recently passed H.R. ninety-nine, which allows, with school board approval, the arming of school staff after only twenty-four hours of training. I would like to know if the school board has considered the implications of that, if they have prepared position on that. And if not, I would like to encourage you to publicly announce that you will not be arming the school staff.
I can't speak for the school board, but I will not ever bring a motion before the board recommending that they arm school staff.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Next is Jeffrey Podolsky.
Good evening, everybody here in Maryland. Come to speak to you about the bond issuance, of course. I recently had a face-to-face conversation, I kind of led into, in writing what I'm going to share with you tonight. But we debated the need and the urgency of the schools. We didn't, you know, it's hard to relate a conversation to a room full of people, but we didn't talk about us. We didn't talk about me, you, or I. We talked about them. And I think when we discuss the money of a hundred and sixty-five million dollars, it's for us now as adults to pay for. But as we've heard from several members already, this school district has prepared your children well. And as they've prepared you well, some of you have even gone to these schools and enjoyed, as community members, no building costs. These buildings are fifty, sixty, a hundred years old. You've enjoyed them. You've succeeded from them. And now the bill comes due. It's not for any of us to argue that point. We understand that. Over sixty years, we've had generations of successful kids. Now it's time for us to leave our legacy. Build them. The conversation with this person, and we differed on opinions, wasn't heated, it wasn't mean, and it wasn't uncomfortable like it is online. We spoke about basements that are half a century old with old construction techniques, old materials that have been outlawed in some cases, and we're filtering our children through these buildings. It's sickening. It's not you. It's not I. It's them. It's the children. The teachers. That's who's going into the buildings. When I write these things, I get worked up and I apologize, but it's emotional to me. My children probably won't enjoy the new schools, but I'm building them for the next generation of ours. All right? Because I plan on being in Nordonia for a long time. We discussed the difficulties of sitting on the toilet and pulling your pants down, but you can't let your pants touch the ground because there's sewage on the floor. Who has to deal with that here? But your children do. It's gross. It's disgusting. We're sitting in here sweating because there's no A.C. in these schools. This is what our kids are experiencing every day. But yet, we sit here and we say it's not worth a hundred and sixty-five million. I don't agree. We all work in comfortable conditions. They deserve the same. Back in the day, people took pride out of providing more for their children than they had. It's not what we're doing here. We're seeing how we can cut costs, pinch pennies, make a hundred-year-old building last a little longer. Keep pushing it. Something bad will happen. And when we talk about security measures, and I'm, I'll leave it at this, when we talk about security measures, and we have to talk about closing, locking the doors, making everybody sign in, but at the same time, leave the window open because we don't have A.C. Where's your security? I understand it's a lot of money. I understand not everybody can afford it. It's going to come down to a vote, but have stability online. It's a conversation. It's a discussion, and it's not an easy one to make. There aren't, there aren't going to be winners, and there aren't going to be losers. We all just have to deal with what the vote comes up, and then deal with it from there. And at that point, guys, listen, I want to thank you. I'm sorry for getting emotional up here, but like I said, this is something that lasts a lot longer than any of us sitting in this room. And in most cases, don't go out for one night. I take my family a Ford Winkin' Lizard, and it cost me eighty dollars one night a month. And that's for an average-priced home in Eaton. So please, thank you. Sorry about going over time.
Finally, Doug Masteller.
Good evening. My name is Doug Masteller, twenty-four, twenty-five-year-plus resident of Macedonia and proud turn of three Nordonia graduates. I was also on the facility committee that Dr. Clark referenced earlier, that recommended the proposal that's going on the ballot here in Nevada. I want to thank the board for voting to put that ballot, to put that levy out of ballot. I get, understand there's a lot of negativity that comes along with that sometimes, especially online. And putting the next out there really gives a community a chance to weigh in on what they want for their community. So I think that's a positive thing. We can't, we can't go forward with anything unless there's an issue to vote on. Now, I acknowledge that there's a significant amount of money involved in this, and there's a lot of people that, a lot of speaker acknowledge they have some deep questions to ask about that. But from what I've said, it's a good investment. It's the last hundred percent. We have to pay it forward. We have to make sure this community is a good place to live for years and years to come. Now, I know that timing is always a question. You know, the economy is what it is. Inflation's high. But frankly, you know, costs aren't going down. The place may be high right now, but it's not coming back. It's not coming down. So costs are going to be higher in the future, not, not any longer. I guess what I'd like to close by saying is that voters should really try and educate themselves. I really appreciate the individuals that came here tonight and asked questions. I appreciate the civil matter in which it was done, as opposed to what you see online. And I really encourage everyone to, to really educate yourself. I believe there's a school facility tour scheduled sometime coming up here in early September. Maybe you can fill in the details there. Not here, but. And between that and other opportunities to, to read materials and educate yourself, do what's, do what you can before you go to vote and move.
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, there is a facilities tour on Saturday, September tenth. All six of our schools will be open from nine to one. PTAs will be. PTA's will be sponsoring the freshmen's and raffles. We're also, we know that it's a busy time of year, people have soccer and football, those kinds of things. So the principals are doing a videotape of the tours also that should be available online soon, so people can see. You know, when you drive by our buildings, you know, and the grass is freshly cut and the flowers are, they look like they're in good shape. There's a lot of things that you don't see inside of a building that causes some issues. So that's the kind of thing we want to showcase for people, so they get a real understanding. Yeah, the analogy I always like to use is, you know, sometimes you have to stop investing in your old clunker of a car but when you towards a new car. And you might still owe on the old car, and you might still have the hope that it's going to last longer, but sometimes you got to bite the bullet and do what's right for a long time. So with that, I'll close and I'll just say, good night. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Doug.
We are now at the portion for our reports from our liaisons to board committees, superintendent committees, and other organizations. And I'd like to give Mr. Brown the opportunity to go first.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, Dr. Clark, as president, school board members. For those who don't know, I am on Nordonia's representative to the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, and as such, I'm on the school board for the Career Center. On Wednesday, August 24th, our staff welcomed incoming and returning secondary students. We are proud to serve students in Brexville, Broadview Heights, Cuyahoga Heights, Garfield Heights, Independence, Nordonia Hills, North Royalton, Revere, and Twitsburg School District. A great deal of work has occurred at the Career Center over the summer, including updates to the driveway, main entrances, as well as the adult education offices and the school of nursing. The summer also includes a refresh of the Career Center's High School Computer Networking Academy, which received new furniture, carpeting, and technology. Additionally, our custodians and maintenance staff focused on preparing the building for the start of the new school year. I want to go into relatively, our much longer presentation on job placement update for the Career Center. The state of Ohio had a June unemployment rate of 4.5%, declining from 5.3% a year ago, reflecting the continued return of job seekers to the workforce. We're hoping that the Career Center Job Board can assist our alumni, adult education, and high school students, as well as community members in securing employment. We currently have 59 openings posted along with seven listed under other opportunities, including apprenticeships and employer flyers hiring for multiple positions. Although postings are much lower this summer, our job board for the fiscal '22 had a 32% increase over the prior year, with over 1,100 opportunities being featured, which was an all-time high. We have 37 companies featured on our virtual business fair, where job seekers can research companies and utilize their online career boards and application systems. Local employers know how to use this job board to secure trained employees. We appreciate the following companies for posting their current opportunities with us. They include Megat Company of Akron, Wibel and Associates in Broadview Heights, Spectrum in Garfield Heights, I.E.R. Fujikura Incorporated in Macedonia, North Royalton YMCA, and Keystone Dredged Products in Valley View, Ohio. The range of wages currently listed on the job boards start from a low of $10 to a high of $35 per hour, with many of the positions offering full-time benefits. These wages are above the current minimum wage in Ohio, which was currently $9.30, showing our skilled alumni have the opportunity to gain higher wages. Additionally, upcoming seniors work over the summer to continue learning and earning. We have 22 summer interns, many working full-time, to continue to hone their skills in the business environment. Employers for the summer interns included Double-A Heating and Cooling, Kaufman Electric, Efficient Industries, Atlas Copno, and Swaglock, to name a few of the organizations. Many of these students will return to paid internships during our second academic quarter, typically working four days a week in lieu of attending classes at the Career Center. Finally, our next regular Board of Education meeting will be on Thursday, September 29th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Career Center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Can we start at the end of the table and work our way down? Do you have anything, Mr. Timmore?
Yes, so while we were in recess in conversation with some of the new hires, one of the consistent threads that I heard was being excited about joining and working for a district with diversity. A lot of times, we only acknowledge diversity by way of race or ethnicity, but we also want to make sure that we don't forget about our scholars who suffer from disabilities. And I was so proud when I received the notification that the National Diversity Council has selected Nordonia to receive the 2022 National Disabilities Inclusion Leadership Award. It will be presented at the National Disabilities Inclusion Summit, which will be held in Atlanta, Georgia in October. And just to give you some insight, the purpose of the National Disabilities Inclusion Summit is to recognize people and organizations that are leading the way in disability advocacy and inclusion efforts within the workplace and community, as well as highlighting D.E.I. best practices surrounding inclusion of individuals with disabilities. And you all know that we hosted this year our first Disabilities Awareness Week. And so I'm just really proud about the work that we're doing, the intentional work that we're doing here in our district, and why we are now a destination place for people not only to move, live, and be a part of community, but also come and work as well. So kudos to the district for receiving this accolade.
We are very proud of that. And we've got, it takes a village, as you know, Carrie Hutchinson over at the table. She is the director of our People Services Department. So special education falls under her realm, and she's got a great team that work together. We're very proud of the award.
Breaks out here. Nothing either.
Um, I got a little bit. For the legislative piece, the Ohio School Safety Summit was held on August 2nd through 4th in Columbus, Ohio. Ms. Bodich and I attended the conference and were able to participate in various educational opportunities. And we heard, or I heard, I was there for two days, Ms. Bodich was there for the full three. We heard presentations by Daniel Lewis. This gentleman was the lead investigator for Sandy Hook, the school shooting that took there. And his, his presentation was just nothing short of amazing, nothing short of amazing. Eric Tymantowski. And he talked about digital threat assessments. And so when we look about technology and pieces, and those are, those are components we need to be looking at. Jennifer Cohen was from the Department of Homeland Security Violence Prevention. And this is here. Andrea Summers and Neely Keys presented school-based mental health wellness, which are key components of the things that we need to do to keep our kids safe. Stephen Sorka from Case Western Reserve University presented on the power of "we." I was there with Mrs. Gable, I saw you there. And Frank DeAngelis is the retired, now-retired school principal from Columbine High School. He, he had a very strong presentation to give and very heartfelt, heartfelt. Let's see here. Steve Hutton, what does the brain have to do with school safety when we talk about trauma-informed schools, when we look at the impact on the brain? And these are key components that we need to be looking at in every district. Stephen Driscoll, this was my favorite presentation. He was from the U.S. Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center. We always think of the Secret Service as protecting the President of the United States. They do a whole lot more than that. Mr. Driscoll was my favorite presentation. While sharing the research findings around the mass incidents, he also talked about the tragedies that were prevented. Those are the ones we never hear about. It's good that we don't have to care about them. He also complimented Safer, the Safer Ohio tip line here in Ohio. The importance of "see something, say something." These are things, the tip line is on our website. Kids always know what it is. I've seen it pushed out multiple times throughout the district. And the "see something, say something," that's something all of our kids should know and hear. More grant money has now been made available to Ohio school districts for safety and security. And while at the conference, Mr. Wright pulls out of his bag, and I'm not exaggerating, a stack that was clipped that's about that thick of grant proposals he was already working on to be able to bring more money into the district. So we are actively seeking bringing in more dollars to be able to, to supplement our safety features. And it was, it was an incredible summit, and the information gathered there, I just found tremendous.
Fantastic. And let's move into the superintendent's recommendation. Item one, I recommend you approve the consent items listed.
I'll motion.
Okay, you are, if you vote yes, you are approving these three new or revised work policies. One about complaints about fellow employees and two dealing with grants. You're approving donations, here we go again. The Building Boosters of Nordonia Hills donating almost $400 worth of equipment for the safety desk at the lobby of Nordonia High School. The Chafee Family Foundation donating almost $2,100 to our high school robotics team. And the Ledview PTA donating almost $3,000 worth of equipment for the staff over there. It never ceases to amaze me the generosity of our community. You'll be approving the gifted brochure for this year. There's change, no changes other than names of people involved. You're approving a contract with Heights Driving School. This allows Heights Driving School to offer drivers' training in our, in our school. You are approving the cell phone service reimbursement for administrators. This has not changed in 15 years that I've been here, but it's an annual recommendation. And you're approving the transportation routing schedule with the caveat that we can change routes as necessary throughout the year.
Any questions? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Item two is a recommendation that you approve the contracts for our People Service Department. All motion?
I'll second.
Okay. And you see these, from time to time, these are for providing services for our students with disabilities.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Item three is a recommendation to approve a parking license agreement with Our Lady of Guadalupe.
All motion.
I'll second.
Our Lady of Guadalupe has been a fabulous neighbor at Ledview. They're allowing us to use their parking lot to ease the congestion during dismissal. And in exchange, we pay them for some care of their parking lot.
Any questions?
Just as a point of clarification, I'm going to abstain during this vote. I have family members who are members there.
Awesome, thanks, Matt.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, four, zero, with one extension. Item four is a recommendation to approve the revised student academic consumable fees for Nordonia High School.
All motion.
I'll second.
You see, the AP fees went up a dollar since we last approved these, and we are removing the fees for Naviance, French 2 CP, and others in the Spanish run.
Do we have any questions?
Just that, I think you guys know where I stand on fees and I don't. Dr. Clark has mentioned working towards that this spring, which I'm excited about. So of course, I'm going to support this. I appreciate your effort looking into that.
Any else? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
No.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to one. Item five is a recommendation to approve the athletic event worker pay schedule.
All motion.
Uh, this is, the next couple of items, the next couple of items are actually great cleanup work by our branding treasure, who's fantastic, I tell him all the time, he's fantastic. I think he's afraid I'm going to ask him to prom soon or something, I'm not sure. He's been so good at what he does, and he's cleaning up some of these things. These event workers never used to come to board, and now they do. These rates haven't changed, but he's cleaning it up, so we have clear evidence that they were approved in these rates.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Uh, item six, recommendation you approve the purchase service agreements, or purchase service contracts.
All motion. I'll second.
Again, these are things that we never used to bring to board. Matt determined that this is the kind of thing that we should be bringing to board. So these are, you're going to see these from time to time, and they're things like private music instructors, tutors, those kinds of things that we would, we would enter into agreements with, but the board would never vote on those agreements. We're doing that to make sure we have good transparency.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Item seven is a recommendation to approve the personnel items listed.
All motion.
I'll second.
There's nothing really too outstanding on the personnel items this month, except I call your attention to the retirement, or the resignations, really, of three long-term subs. But the issue with hiring long-term subs is that they're still out looking for full-time jobs, and these three folks found full-time jobs. And we're most sad to lose Julie Book, the English teacher, because you couldn't find a more perfect name for an English teacher than Mrs. Book. The rest of this is just typical kinds of things for this time of year.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. And item eight, my final item, is you approve the personnel item listed.
All motion.
I'll second.
And this is a recommendation for Wendy Dunham, that is Chad's sister. Although Chad is not required to abstain, he likes to do that to show that he is ethical in all of his dealings. So thank you, Chad.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Staying.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Timmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bodich?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. And that concludes my report.
All right, moving on to my report. We have the recommendation to approve the consent items. These would be the minutes from July 18, 2022, the special and regular minutes, as well as the student activity budgets and the financial statements for July 2022. I recommend we're prepared.
All motion.
I'll second.
Just so you are aware, for new board members, each year during this meeting, we have the student activity, purpose, and budget set up and presented to you. These are the student activities that students participate throughout the year. This is basically letting you know what their activities are and what, how they plan on spending that money for their college degree. They're all for the middle school and high school. Additionally, just a brief review of our month finances for the month of July 2022. We have ended July 2022 in total receipts at just over $11 million, and that compared to last year at the same time of $10.3 million. So that's showing a 7.3% increase. A couple of the areas where we are seeing that increase is on the property tax, real estate collections. As you know, we received property tax settlements twice throughout the school year. We are in the second half of that. So we are in the phase of receiving advances, and until we receive that final settlement from the county, we won't be able to do a full analysis of how that panned out. But currently, we're 7.5% higher this year than we were last year. Another thing, and I've talked about this ad nauseam last year, but again, the states changed their funding. state's changed their funding formula. However, ODE did not implement the calculation of that funding formula until January 2022. So because we're doing analytics at current time to last July, we're still going to have a significant variance until we get to January 2023. So that will be a recurring variance that we'll talk about. And then moving on to the expenditures, we have ended the month of July 2022 of total expenditures of just under $4.5 million, compared to last year of $3.8 million, and this is an increase of 18%. I will state, the main reason for that increase is due to the employee's retire insurance benefits line item. That's showing a 140.8% increase. Now, the reason why that's so significant is due to the premium holidays that have historically been awarded to the district from the consortium that we participate in. Last year, July was an insurance premium holiday. This year, it is not. And keep in mind, an insurance premium holiday saves the general fund about $600,000. So that difference is the main reason why our expenditures are higher this year as compared to last year. So overall, for the month of July, we have a net income of $6.5 million, and our unencumbered, unreserved fund balance is at 15.5. Any questions if you have any?
Any questions? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is a recommendation to approve the fund transfers, and I recommend for approval. All motion. I'll second.
What you'll see here are, again, annual transfers that are done around this time of year. Each year, when the previous class has graduated, if there's any money left over in that class fund, they will most likely forward that money onto the subsequent classes that come following them. So that's what this is taking care of, as well as addressing our unplanned checks under Ohio Revised Code 9.39. After five years of holding on to those unplanned funds, we are required to move those over in the future. So that's what's taken care of.
Any questions? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is a resolution to approve a new fund and special cost, and I recommend for approval. All motion.
I'll second.
As we've kind of touched on earlier in the discussion, we received a Ohio K-12 safety grant, which is one of the new fundings that the state has released. Much effort has gone into this from Matt Strickland, the previous business director, and then Casey Wright has kind of pushed us over the finish line with that. So we have received 200, just over $203,000 in the first round of the safety grant. And this is a federal fund that's, it'll become a fund, so we have to create a new special fund concept.
Any questions?
Not necessarily a question, but there is still some funds that we can also write additional grants for, correct?
Yeah, there's a second round that's coming up.
That's what I thought.
I believe that was that packet that was that big?
Yes. He's working on that already.
All right, Mr. Brown.
Okay, Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And then the next item is a resolution to approve a fiscal year 2022, 2023 appropriation adjustment, and I recommend for approval.
All motion. I'll second.
And what this is, in conjunction with the previous resolution, basically, it's giving us the authority to spend that grant.
Any questions?
Man, that's just the authority, not necessarily what we're spending it on, correct?
Yeah, yes, you're right. Okay. It's the authority to spend $203,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item number five is a resolution to consider the appointment of delegate to the annual OSBA Business Meeting.
May I have motion? All motion. I'll second.
And this is done annually at the, this time of year, where we have, as a board, has to nominate or appoint a board delegate to the OSBA Ohio School Boards Association Annual Business Meeting in a modern conference.
Um, it would mean that you have to be going to Capitol Conference, because that's where it takes place. It's in November, is it Sunday, Monday, Tuesday?
The 13th through the 15th.
Yes.
The Sunday through Tuesday.
I have some information on mine, and so I don't want to go. I am slated to go. Okay. I, I was going to say, I thought Liz was going to go.
Well, I nominate Liz to serve as the representative at the OSBA Business Meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And then finally, a resolution to consider the appointment of an alternate delegate to the annual OSBA Business Meeting.
I can't leave both of us. Who's going with you?
Need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion.
All motion.
I'll second.
Um, I will, I'll be the alternate. If Liz can't go or something, I'll make sure I arrange a schedule to the justice board. I have a side for sure if I ever have to.
Well, then I nominate Chad.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we have hit that point where it is time for us all to adjourn and go home. It's wonderful to have you all here with us today. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the board will be held on Monday, September 26th, at 7:00 PM, Northfield Elementary, right here, on Old Eight Road, and hope to see you all back.
All motion.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Timmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.